...of the monopole away from the nearest property line. If right now they're at 118 to the nearest property line.
Right.
And they want to go up to 140 or 150, they're not going to be able to do it.
That's right. So there would be a variance process with that. There'd be possibly something with the structural. And that's something that we'll look at. I do have some comments related to the fall zone code. They do meet the property line right now, but barely. They're not outside of the fall zone with the nearest structure, the main structure outside. Certainly there's sites like that, there's sites like that in Woodbury. BMW dealership is one, where you are located very close to a property line. You are located very close to a building. I think we have to look at what's on board now with 110 feet. But I could certainly opine, use that word, about the possibility of future changes.
That's my concern because of the residential homes nearby and...
The throughway.
The throughway and the fact that, you know, that the building right next to the tower is occupied daily.
Right.
So...
We wouldn't build the tower to be extendable to 150 feet in height. We wouldn't build the tower to be extendable to 150 feet in height. That's typically a 110-foot tower wouldn't be built to support that type of 40-foot extension.
So are you, are you willing to say that you will never do it?
Well, I think, I think that would be bad planning on our part and bad planning on your part. What we would typically do though is we would typically build the tower foundation. So that way it would be able to support an addition. Usually it's more in the 10 or 20-foot range. It's typically not a 40-foot extension. And what we could also do as part of the structural report, we could build it with what they call a fall zone hinge point. So that the tower fall zone would be something less than the height of the tower. And what they generally do is, is they actually make the lower portion of the tower structurally stronger. And the way the metal is, it will typically bend upon itself if it did structurally fail, which is a very rare occurrence. And it would be, it would bend at the point where it was structurally stronger at the bottom. So you could do a, you could do a hinge point, as we call it, about 60 feet up. So then the fall zone would be half the height of the tower as opposed to the full length of the tower. So that's something that we could engineer into the, into the design.
But aesthetically, I'm also concerned with the higher tower and the neighboring residences.
We're only proposing 110 feet.
Because then you're going to be moving into wetlands. So I know you guys are like squeezed right in there, like you can't move, you have no wiggle room.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we do meet, we do meet the, we do meet the property line setbacks. Obviously, I think, I think the one comment is that we, the setback to the, to the building is, I think, three feet less than the height of the tower. As I said, we could design the tower with a hinge point. We can move the tower to three feet. I don't think that's a, a big concern. As I said, we would only build the tower to be extendable in the future. And as Mr. Musso said, that would require some type of, you know, village process. So we would build the tower with the foundation to be structurally sound and to be able to add, you know, handle that. To be able to avoid, you know, another carrier in the future coming in saying they would not be able to use the lower heights and therefore they needed a second tower. So that's what we would be trying to avoid, but at least give the option to the village to be able to, you know, take a look at that opportunity as opposed to being handcuffed with a tower that didn't have that capacity.
Well, when you go into this, and I'm a late person, so I don't understand a lot of this. But when you go into this, do you really look to just be the only carrier on that tower?
No. No, I, no, so I think that's the, I think that's the difference here is that you do have a tower developer. And a tower developer, quite frankly, encourages co-location because they make more money. If it was a, if it was just a carrier, they only care about themselves. So what we did here is we found, we found a location that worked for Verizon and a height that worked for Verizon. But we're fairly confident and we're proposing both the ground space and the tower itself to be constructed to be able to support that co-location. So as a tower developer, I think that's an important point. I'm glad you raised that. Thank you.
Well, you both have the right, you do show four locations, the lowest one is 65 feet. Seven, sorry.
Correct.
Has that been listed? Is that something that's being looked at?
So, yeah, so here's, so here's the thing. It's, it's, one of, one of Mr. Musso's comments were, show us some coverage maps. One of the things of this area, and it's in the Verizon report, it's needed for coverage, but it's also more importantly needed for capacity. And the reason for that is very simple. The surrounding sites, one is up at the Harriman Estate up on Arden Road. What we call that is a boomer site. It's up on top of a mountain. It covers a large geographic area. And the area that it covers, quite frankly, are two major highways and the commons. So there's a significant number of users there. And when you look at our capacity data for Verizon, it's way over 100%, which means the site can't handle all the people that are in that area. The other site to the south, I guess the site also on the throughway. And that site's covering a tremendous amount of individuals as well because it's on the throughway. There's a lot of traffic there. And one of the ways to handle that is you cover a smaller area by putting a new site in the middle. So the point being is that these, this site isn't intended to cover a large geographic area. More importantly, it's intended to cover an area that has a dense amount of usage to be able to offload the capacity of the surrounding sites, the one up on the hill and the one down on the throughway. So that's the importance of it. So to answer your question, we think it will because it's above the tree line at that lower height. You'll never know until another carrier comes in. But the reality is, is that the tower will be able to support the carriers at those lower heights. The ground space will be able to support the carriers at those lower heights. We'll bring in the telephone and the electric service. We will make it very easy for them to co-locate on the tower. Your code requires that they first co-locate on that existing tower. So all of the factors will be in place with respect to location, design, code, and quite frankly, a tower developer making it easy for them to co-locate. So we have every expectation that they will.
So then the design that you're submitting, will have that hinge point on it built in already?
We certainly can. That's not a problem.
Now, and then is that possible if the stealth tree, the stealth tree, is that, does that have the same option of having a hinge point as well?
It does. It's basically a monopole with branches. So that's, you know, it's, it's just, it's just a heavier tower because it has to be able to support all of the branches. So it becomes a thicker and, you know... So what we would typically do is we would typically do a letter from our engineer saying where the hinge point would be. And then once we order the tower, we would have full construction drawings and structural analyses that would be submitted as part of the building application. And that could also be reviewed by Mr. Musso at that time. It's just a matter of, we can't get that report until we know whether it's a monopole or a tree and we actually order the tower, that's when we get it from the manufacturer and that's when we have those construction drawings. As far as the hinge point, yes, not a problem.
You make, you say you make it structurally stronger at the bottom of the hinge points there. Does that make it the really fat bottom where it's unusual?
No, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. Now, now adding, going to the tree design, the diameter of the tower does increase.
Michael?
Certainly that would be on the final drawings. If we'll see sections for the stealth tree. As Mr. Codio says, a hinge point in this case would be about 50% more.
Yeah, I'll talk to the engineers, but that's typical.
And the fall zone would be much lower than the type of heat. So it's usually a lapse, it's less than half the height of the tower. On the port of, there's some tight areas when you are. So I think that's, that's something that we'll come together. I think this board will have to see some of the simulations and the drawings, stealth tree versus conventional. I think that's one of the things I am assuming we'll get. I'll summarize all the RF information. I do still think it's important. I've asked for information from Verizon because they can't get information from AT&amp;T. I think it's spring. But it is analogous. When Mr. Codio brought up, I think it's important, the Arden House Road Tower and the Mar Lane Tower by BMW. The carriers are all on there as well. Verizon's on there and they're noting a need here. Verizon's going to be retooling the Arden House Road site, correct? Because I think it's losing a segment.
Well, that's the plan and it is a matter of record. I've spoken to council about it, that the owner of the property up there is, is not approving any modifications to the tower at the time. So that is something that's planned, but it's not necessarily imminent.
Right. And I think the documentation is even if things stay status quo, there's three performance factors, key performance indicators of capacity. And I think Verizon's done a pretty good job here showing those tracks and how they're seeing the actual current product.
Michael, is there any guidelines as far as the appearance of the stealth tree as the tower grows or more antenna are included? I've seen some that start off nice and end up pretty ugly.
Yeah. So there are, and this is not something that's FCC related. It's a little more planning or aesthetic related. So you look at color, texture, density, taper, branching. So for something a bit taller, you actually can get a decent profile. So it doesn't look like a bottom crush. Those are the things I ask them to provide with the supplemental materials we can take a look at. I'd also provide some examples. Not sure what vendor they're going to be using, but there's a few out there. And they've gotten pretty decent over time. It's 110, but they can do, I think, a good job blending into the tree line. Not just some very scant branching on top. But it should include and be considerate if anyone else wants to come below Verizon. They'll be able to tuck their rates into that branching system.
Is it 110 plus 20? Is it the, all potentially get to 130 feet tall? Is that what I heard earlier?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I would agree with that. If they're designing the foundation now for 110 and co-location below it, that's certainly the plan. That's certainly the model of our own towers, which is an infrastructure company, not a provider. They lease out to Verizon in this case. They also lease out to the other carriers. That is correct. You wouldn't look to double the size of the tower. It's usually, in my experience, 10 and 12 feet.
Are you comfortable with 130? I mean, is that something you want locked in?
Yeah, I think it's speculative at the current time. You know, we're hearing from Verizon right now. And I think the supplemental information is going to gauge what the feasibility is for the carriers below that.
Where does APC stand now? Wasn't that Verizon also?
Well, yeah, they transferred over to Tarpin Tower. Verizon was the co-applicant or the anchor tenant for that. That's under construction.
So are we, is, are we taking that into consideration as far as the coverage?
Yeah, it's completely out of its own coverage.
Okay.
For this area.
Okay.
That makes it pretty easy.
Yeah, I thought that when we had looked at it, that was like the first application.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is very much a throughway, break on parts Route 6 and 32 and the local roads around. That's where heavy capacity is going to be used up. With respect to the height, you're proposing 110.
Correct.
So there's no need to lock it in until 110 is always approved. If they decide later on they want to increase it.
They have to come out, come back to you. They have to get approval. They have to consider the visual impact of, and everything else related to that increase in size. So I don't think you need to so-called lock it in and say they can only go another 10 or 20 feet. They're only asking for 110. That's the only approval they'll get. If they need anything else, they'll come back to you and they'll have to justify it and you will have to...
But again, just so I understand, if they've only got that eight, eight additional feet to the nearest property line, because they're 118 feet away from the, that nearest property line. So if they wanted to go 120, they'd have to get a variance.
Well, no, I think that was the point of asking for the hinge point.
Right.
So that, and I, I think this board should, should be realistic in expectations that Woodbury is growing. The area around us is growing. That for the most part, they, at some point, the applicant will probably like it, that they're going to get other carriers in there. So I mean, I think at some point this carrier is probably going to be back in front of us looking to put... So I'd rather us get the, get it right from the get-go, like get that hinge point in there. So that if the tower does have to go taller and this board does grant that, I, I'll read me for a fist. I'd rather see the tower go taller than them turn around and say, now we need to put a second tower in. Now you've got two towers with all the stuff on top of it.
Okay. So with the hinge point, they can go up to the full 150 without a variance?
No, again, they would, no.
In other words, they have to come back to the board, but they wouldn't need a variance is what you're saying?
First of all, they're not talking about 150. They're only talking about that the basis they were constructing, I understand, only allowed to up to 110, 120. I mean, 130, 130.
Yeah.
And then that's it. That's the extent of design. They have to redo the design of the tower. Do I, once they 150s?
No, I, it'd be unrealistic most likely. But more importantly, I think going to what the chairman said, I think we're going to put in the infrastructure, the design, the technology into it to give you the opportunity in the future to look at whatever it is. As opposed to not doing it, not planning now. So we're going to do things that are invisible, but that will give you opportunities in the future if you see fit and if there's a need from the carriers. So we're going to design the foundation. We'll put the hinge point in the tower. We'll make the tower designed that it can be extended. But we're not proposing to do that. We're only proposing to go to 110 feet. But if it does come back, you wouldn't want to say, well, gosh, I wish we had designed the tower to have a fall zone and we didn't, and now we're kind of handcuffed because of that. So we're just going to try and, we're going to put the technology and the design into it. Costs us more. I think it's good planning though. Makes a lot of sense.
The hinge point with this theoretical increase, it would reduce the fall zone potential to something like 65 feet.
Okay.
With that on. The idea is that there will be a point of failure that will break before the bottom part does.
Okay.
So it is something that's been used before and I think it makes sense here.
But I think the other thing that's saying is like the concrete, the actual structure that the steel is sitting on would only be designed to support a tower at a maximum of 130 feet. So if, say this, I don't know, this 150-foot tower wanted to go in, they would actually have to take down the entire tower, redesign the, the concrete pad, all the supporting infrastructure behind it. So it's not like they could just come to us and poof magically get a variance and somehow get this monstrosity sitting there. But like I said, I just think we should look going forward that there potentially would be other carriers in this, this location. And just not handcuff us into having to put multiple towers in. That's all. That's, those are, that's mine.
No, I understand.
I'm good.
Joe? I'm good.
Sandy? Sorry?
Yeah, just one question, Joe. The stealth tree material, is that fireproof?
Maybe the applicant who know about that, we did run into that with APC Tarpin.
Yeah, it's basically, it's basically a fiberglass and, and plastic type of material. When you say it's fireproof, it's, you know, I can't say that it's not flammable the way steel is. Typically, the fires that we've seen related to telecommunications towers have to do with a mistake happening with welding. And it'll catch the covering on the cables that are on the inside of the tower on fire. That's what we've typically seen. I've never seen one of the tree material actually catch on fire.
So if lightning hits it, you don't know?
It's grounded. It's grounded and bonded.
Another material?
Yeah, I've never, I've never heard of a situation of lightning causing it. I have heard of a handful of situations where the, where the welding did catch the cable wrapping.
And the cabling would be in the core of the tower and it only come out to the arrays?
Correct.
Okay. Because I take the one over BMW, everything's on the, is on the, is on the outside of it.
Only so much you could fit inside.
Yeah.
In this case, it would be all of that.
Okay. So that would be one less thing to look at too. Big black cables, not... All right. I'm good. Good, you're good. Now, I know we said we scheduled a public hearing. I know there are some outstanding issues. Are we in a spot that we can do that?
I think they are. In a spot to do that through the form of co-location. They have to give us a where, if you want us to work, because that may be a fairer order of what like to cross application, which is not different. That requires a public hearing, well, this public hearing will be double proposed. The web line will show as a site and a tower. So you need to get that application in soon. And then tell you the deadline to get it in and then take that into consideration. But you can, on, if you look at that before the hearing has occurred. So they have to wait for the public hearing to see whether it's applicable to the public hearing.
Yeah, with the wetlands application and then the renderings of the second style of tower. How long does, anybody know how long is a wetland application typically? How much time you need to lead for that?
You're supposed to have things in for the building department.
Weeks, yeah.
That's not a problem.
It's not a problem?
Not a problem.
Okay. So if you get it in two weeks from now, then you can be on the following, following meeting?
That's October 2nd.
Sounds like it might be.
It's October, would you say, would you say October 2nd?
It was just a lucky guess.
And the noticing for site plan special permit, is that 30-day notice?
I talked to the clerk about this. They need, yeah, if you're going to schedule it for October 2nd, that can be done tonight if you wish. They need, they need...
Always need someone more difficult to publish than those requirements that are standardized. So if you made a determination that I could list it, you really should do it on the 2nd or 4th of 2nd. And you have that alternative in mind.
Very good. Thank you.
And you feel 18th is a reasonable date? Because if I get stuff on the 19th, I'm, it's going to get pulled off the agenda.
I understand, especially...
That's what we have to do, so you have a public hearing and then you adjourn it to another...
You have to extend, right? Thank you for keeping me straight.
And I would get yelled at at the beginning of the meeting like you started out tonight, so I get it.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant and the consultant of...
I just want to indicate that the planning board sent out its notice of intent. And you stay here, but you have soon a day to see. So you can go soon a day to see this evening. You still need to go through the R2 or the EAF in order to make a determination since it begins. I would think you would want to certainly wait on that now until you have a better handle on the visual impact. But I think you can go ahead and soon a day to see tonight. Affirmative, I'm 239. You see going back from the highway, county highway department, they had no problem. Didn't get the response back from the planning department, but preferred on July 25th. So you're a superior.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that this, that this board assumes lead, a lead agency under SICA. I guess, second. Any questions?
I do. Would you second that?
Joe.
Joe.
Just leave it.
I'll make no more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote for a motion that we schedule a public hearing for October 2nd.
2nd.
2nd again by Joe. Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time this evening. See you next month.
Thank you. One more. Sandy, me page by gentleman over there.
Oh. Sheets. Sheets, but sheets.
What's the thread count on those sheets? What are we looking at? What's the thread count?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't typed it.
We haven't typed it yet. We have to actually go through the form. Okay. Weiss, Apple Hill. Review revised plans for proposed single-family home located at 26 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills. This property is designated as critical environmental area pursuant to SICA and subject to the Village Regulations for Risk Preservation 3010-13. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury, Tax Map Section 204, Block 2, Lot 2. And you're back.
Good evening. Joel Mann from Brahman Associates. On behalf of the applicant, I have a very tattered architect and joint queen and engineer. Basically, on this application on 26 Apple Hill, we, the board has approved this application with the updated, with the footprint. And at that time, and that was discussions back and forth, we didn't have the final floor plan before the board. And the same thing, the site plan wasn't updated. So when we got the draft resolution, the draft resolution has still listed the old site plan with the like 10,000 square foot footprint and all elevations on, on the list. A couple other things, there was like a list, in the draft resolution was mentioned about four bedrooms. In fact, we, the plan we submitted for the board was five bedrooms and that was actually discussed at the last planning board meeting. So I was about to see what, I don't want to fall in any problems. So I met with the building inspector and asked him, listen, with this resolution, how will you see the application going forward if I want to submit for building plans? And he told me, we'll send you back to the ARB. So we decided, you know what, let's finish up our floor plans completely. We'll have the site plan updated. We'll submit it for the board. And we'll, so the, the correct list of drawings can be listed in the resolution. So everything can be set on the right way. So doing, finalizing the footprint, there was slight, some slight changes on the front elevations, not affecting anything major. We didn't change the, the material selection. And actually, we provided for the board that that, the last meeting, we just had the front elevation. Now we have all four sides elevation completed. And, and I think we got a letter from the planning board engineer regarding that, he missed a letter from us basically pointing out the changes. And this was actually submitted today. We just got it like the last couple of days. So we submitted that letter today, what is basically listing exactly what, what is the same and what has been revised. It's not actually revised or more like updated and clarified. So we are here tonight that this should basically be listed in the final resolution and hope to get the final resolution adopted.
So this is a little, this is a little different.
Yes. Yes, this is a little bit different. And the memo that I wrote is a little different. I know, this application was this closely approved. They received their approval by voice vote here, motion of the board. And then when it was listed for actual authorization or resolution, they withdrew it for a minor change. When I reviewed the plans, they tried to clear things up and I couldn't really classify as a minor change. I listed the number of things that I saw. In effect, it may be a minor change, but it's a number change. I went through the history and the, the changes in board members during the period of time. It was a law application, the law was the area that I was in. And that was because there were number changes by half. There was a site that was quite a board. It was a large structure, larger than we've all seen. What came out of this was a somewhat new structure than they originally requested. So there was a lot of agents by the board trying to fit into the neighborhood as it should. And there was some desire by the actor for a certain sized structure, but they failed to drive them forwards. There's some place in the middle that's still a fairly large structure in the area. But I think that the structure that they had now is basically in terms of size, what the board, what the board acted on the last time. It's about 5,000 square foot footprint. And I'll ask the applicants, representatives in China, to write to prepare what they had and submit this stuff. It was kind of difficult to do because the site plan that we had there was called for the two bedroom house. The site plan was the actual ARB drawings that you had, had changed. But they hadn't exactly come to discuss it the rest of the week. So I listed down where I could see the changes. Obviously, the set system is no longer a two-bedroom house, it's a five-bedroom. It was maybe issues with the actor. The front yard setback has changed slightly. The side yard setback's changed slightly. The rear yard setback changed slightly. I think maybe that is to reflect the smaller house. There are many changes. The building footprint appears to be reduced from the last site plan I had. I think that's just to reflect the 5,000 square foot building. But then there were, unfortunately you realize this, there were changes on the exterior of the building in terms of patios and decks. And there were a number of those that were changed. It was, the rear patio was reconfigured and it appears reducing from the picture. There was a rear deck added, I didn't see. There was a, a front patio that was added. And that one, I think I noted in the report that you should confirm for your own safety. You think that this is appropriate for the area. I don't know there are a lot of homes there that have front patios. It may not be a huge patio, it may just be an ornament. And the grade along the front is starting to change. In terms of the architectural, I looked at the basement plan. It had three bedrooms before, that's why I said architectural is more important. It is what we're acting. The architecture was at three bedroom, but now they showed the entire area finished. They weren't showing the finish before, but that doesn't change the cubicle content. I think the board probably... I believe it's five thousand square feet, and I'd ask the applicants' representatives to chime in when we're done here, just to confirm the area's construction. The first floor, I think it's around that, the first floor plan has two bedrooms and living space, and I believe that's, it lists as five thousand four hundred square feet, that's on the plan. But I think that five thousand forty-three square feet, in addition to that living space, there's a garage, a covered front porch, the side porch, the rear porch, and the deck that are on that, and they're not included in five thousand four hundred, they're thin. Maybe that's not...
They are.
They're included in the five thousand?
Yeah, because we were all longer from a footprint, so I can make a differentiation between occupied or living space versus...
The lateral is that issue. Then it's five thousand four hundred, it includes all of that, and that's the same footprint?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same footprint. It's, it's the same sized area, it took a couple inches here, it's trimmed them off, but the five forty, it's exactly five oh four three, the same number.
Now with the expanded septic, that mound or setback in the front, the berm, that doesn't change, that berm is still there?
The berm will...
Okay.
With the trees and everything?
Yes, we pull the septic back off of that berm, so it's on the inside.
Okay.
And there's a second floor, that makes a sudden open atrium, balcony and bathroom, and then there's an unnamed room, we'll ask this out of our...
Are they did it that, it's unfinished, open to the rear?
But it's not open to anything.
They should be an access door.
Okay.
To get to an animal's...
But it's not, that's...
It's not finished by the law.
Well, the area to the left, that's the area you don't show, I think that's, that's all.
So...
Room in front.
Down on the garage.
On the garage, then, in front of the house, right over the front. Room in the back, in the box.
It's, yeah, it doesn't even, most of it doesn't, right, it's, I'll call it after, it's like another...
Okay, it has rear...
And a roof, which is the rest of the entrance.
Okay. So, let's explain to the board, basement, I think, is around five thousand square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Basement's around five thousand square feet. Not only that is exposed, the portion that's exposed on the sides, you have window wells.
Correct.
So there's a small, there's a, I'd say a smaller portion exposed on the front?
On the, on the front, it's exposed.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, on the one side we have the wells, the other side has the garage, so that's total areas, you know.
So there's a hill going away, you and Eric, and the hill goes away. In the back, it's exposed, on the sides, on the one side has a window well, the side is not exposed in front, it's just a small area. Then here's the five thousand square foot, five thousand forty-three square foot, living space on the first floor, and then there's another five thousand square foot space, some of which, a lot of which is not used or lived, that's, in terms of cubicle content, that's the do that, five thousand, another five thousand. So, you know, we live here as a ten thousand square foot space, they knock out a basement, and that's, that's, that's what the house will look like. And I don't know if you have anything to add to that in terms of any other changes that I have in mind.
I just want to point out, this is exactly the same footprint and the same elevation, like, besides the small changes, what was before the board, when the board approved that. And the same thing about the basement, the finished basement, that we mentioned for the board at that time, that we showed at least the bedroom count, we didn't have a final plan, but we're going to finish a full basement, probably this was under the recording, like, at the last, at approval meeting, and this was stated. Yeah, just, yeah.
Is there any small changes now?
Correct.
These are the changes that I was able to identify. I'm asking the applicant's representatives whether I missed any changes or anything else?
No, I would, I would just offer that the front porch was on the approved plan as a roof-covered porch, it hasn't changed, figuring the elevation that was on the, the plan you approved. The rear was not, and we may thought it was going on in the back at that point, we didn't look public face and quit and come.
I'm talking about the site plan.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Just throw that bus over next, next year. Now, Rick, I have a question for you. As far as the finishes inside, like, what's contained within the four walls? It's not really part of the ARB approval process per se.
Generally, that's correct. Before you answer that in detail, I want to make it clear, there is no approved plan. This board conditionally approved something by a voice vote, to follow the next month by a resolution. The act can be approved, it has to be withdrawn from that, and there's been no vote in that resolution, so there is no approved plan, right? And applicants changed that now, they're characterizing it as small, Dennis, I'll leave it to you whether these things are small, and whether that's small in consequence. There is something that I think may have also been on the fire plan, I didn't recognize it until recently, and this is talking about an internal issue that can just raise, you know, sometimes it does matter because it may raise certain other questions. Is that the bathroom in the basement has multiple stalls, like a commercial restaurant? So why it be that way? Home, very curious.
Well, there's two bathrooms in both of those.
So that, you may want to inquire, expect that. So there, sometimes the interior raises questions, generally, the ARB doesn't deal with that, but you also...
Now, there's also a staircase on the basement level that looks like it leads out, that didn't exist on the original plan. There's bedroom one and two, between those two.
It's a window level, and that's, I thought the architectural, you, you switched the apartment to the building, but I realized that it was a window level out there. Windows, and the space was created by separate walls. Some of that is in your mind, remember?
Yeah, we, you know, on the old plan, we had, we had the work against yours, and not so there.
Initially, Rick mentioned, I think we had it on the first floor, and the earlier plan mentioned the four hundred, and that changed, the area interpretation of use. Quite frankly, I realized that the basement level now has some unusual provisions for that seventy...
Do we have Gary?
There's one, there's one that has no door, it's an interesting one.
Later, but the, the use question that Gary gave us the letter on, could you refresh our memory on that one?
No, I have no...
Does that, the, the basement playroom is quite large, and then there's a foyer with the men's and women's bathroom, so I'm looking at that, what's the intended usage of space?
I can address that. Basically, this just fully open, this, the owner of this house, wherever, he lives now in Brooklyn, he basically married off all, all his children, and he's coming here for summer, maybe he will be here throughout the year too, but basically, that's where his intent is, maybe the summer and high holidays. Sometimes he will have his kids coming together with him, and they will basically use this house together, they will come, like, for the holidays or weekends, and that was, I'm, I've, actually, in my practice, I've designed, like, a couple thousand units, and I addressed all kinds of interesting requests from clients, and basically, this is exactly what the use is going to be, as a single-family home, and this is the use, and this is what you're approving, and this is the fact, so. But, but if the board has any concern, I'm willing to revise the plan and tell them, listen, I cannot do this, I cannot do that, I don't have a problem with that. Yeah.
In addition to all those bathrooms, I think every bedroom has at least one or half as well.
Correct.
Very curious thing, and the board doesn't have to say, well, I guess, it doesn't make sense, but that's not for me. It is for that, to determine if something doesn't make sense.
If there's any comments, I'm ready to address it.
I, I do have a question, and I mean no disrespect by this at all, I'm just, I compared it to the original plan that you had given us, that had the, the men's mikvah, the women's mikvah, and it's very similar to that. So my question is, is there any intention for this to be a shul with a mikvah?
There was any, there was any mikvah on this plan?
The, the way it was designed with the, the separate bathrooms, and then the, the original plan, the very first plan, it had, I think, eight bedrooms, it had men's mikvah, women's mikvah. So that's, that's what I'm asking, is there...
There was a mikvah originally on this plan?
Yeah, it's the plan.
Okay.
Is there any, right, but with that big open playroom, is there any intention that this will be turned into a shul?
No.
With a mikvah?
No, and certainly you can put it in as a restriction on the resolution, if there's any use for shul, they will need to come back, and it's, as a, currently, there's no plan to use this as a shul, hundred percent.
Okay, only because with, as a single-family home, it's a type-two action, as a shul, a mikvah, it would be at least...
And there's no, and there's no mikvah proposed on this plan?
No, I, I understand that, but there certainly is room in this design.
If they will need to, they want to do a mikvah, they will need to come to the building department to apply for that, so.
So my only concern, playroom and the multiple bathrooms, is the number of occupants that could possibly exist in there, whether they're relatives or not, and having proper exit out of that space is, is important, and I believe that it's a minor change to the plan to create better exiting out of that space. You're looking at a fairly large area, even if you divide it by fifteen, I am sure we're going to exceed a ridiculous amount, number of people that are going to end up exiting out of a three-foot-wide stair eventually. Would you consider, you know, adding an exit?
We can, I don't see a, I don't see an issue with that.
About a hundred and twenty-one people that can fit, and that's...
There will probably be, like, sofas and couches and all kinds of in this room, so, but anyway, but it's not, I don't think this will reach this capacity, he doesn't have that such a big family.
I mean, I'll be honest, I have concerns over the, I have forty people over for the holidays, I don't have stalls in, in, in my house, it is definitely a little bit of a, it is a red flag, and I, I hope you can understand why.
Yeah, I understand.
It's not, I don't think, you know, Sammy and everybody's been on this board for a little bit of time, I don't think we've ever seen a residential structure with individual stalls, so it's definitely a red flag. Barry, the basement windows, those are exit wells?
Where, where are you?
I guess, I, well, I guess it'd really be the only, the side.
Exit, exit wells.
So you would have two additional exits, I mean, that's, that's near each bedroom, I believe, right? That's below grade, has to have a, a three-foot...
Well, every, if you don't have any bedrooms, every bedroom has at least a three-foot way out, plus you need one three-bedroom.
Yeah, so those would be window wells, so they're, they're like three feet wide and...
Yeah, I mean, on the side there and in front, those are window wells, that would have lather, that's for code.
I'm, I'm looking at the bigger space, that's all, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at the big space.
You could look, you could look at the...
Yeah, there's, there's a little X with some window well action on the other side, so the windows...
Yeah, I could, I could get another stairway out in the back somewhere.
Do you think it would be beneficial? I mean...
I would have to say no with that.
Well, I, I mean, I could see the point if you, you know, during the holiday, if that's the biggest room in the house, and you got everybody congregating down there, playing games or whatever people do during the holidays, you're right, you could have a extremely high...
You want to have the catering people bring in food from the backside as you...
This is the basement.
Enter the other side, and I can see a use for another way.
And the, the rear deck, is that, the rear deck, is that basement access, or does that come off the first floor?
First floor. First floor. You look at the back.
Oh, there.
You're designing it for multiple people. I'm just trying to get them out there.
They're out.
Thank you.
They're out. Playroom, we go right onto the deck.
No, 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 I'm talking, like, you're in the basement, you can't go out underneath the deck.
No, there's no window wells there. There's a window well, there's...
Is there any reason why there's a playroom on the first floor, and then there's one on the basement level, and what's the rationale behind that?
Basically, the, this is basically the daily, they have a little, it's basically meaning, make more likely usage of a suka, or a plato, or basically the name, when it's found, leaves here, a plato, it sounds...
It's open to the sky, right, that's what that means?
Yes, yes. If it's a classified, you go back, but that stair, that's the side stair, it's out by the bedroom, was on John's site plan previously, not, not when we dropped it, all the architectural, and having all the, that stair that we were first talking about, that they consistently on the site plan.
Both, both the stairs in this is...
Yeah.
Pass the bus, the bus back the other way now, right?
Coordination, guys, coordination.
So.
Um, I'm okay right now, yeah.
Dennis found Gary's interpretation completed, it doesn't, not very long, I don't know whether or not you want to ask Gary for another payment since this was based upon November eighth, two thousand eighteen plans, but he said, "Since application was discussed at the planning board meeting on August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, the planning board requests in my opinion to determine whether the plan submitted conformed to the definition of a single-family dwelling. I reviewed the house plan submitted by Barry Tarrick, architect, dated five eleven fifteen, five eleven seventeen, received by the building department in November eighth, two thousand eighteen. The following plan sheet was reviewed, and indicated the plan sheet is said, "Based upon my review of the plan submitted, it is my opinion that this would be considered a single-family dwelling. However, there are numerous unfinished spaces that finish would require further review and building permit. Please note that the house shows a maximum of five bedrooms, four plus a nursery. The survey indicates the septic design for eight bedrooms, the septic design would also need to be reviewed by health department prior to the term. I don't know if you want to re-refer this to Gary based upon new plans, but we still with the same mindset."
Which, what plan, which plan did he review? What?
Two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
Well, this one's clear as day, it's something going on.
It's up to the board if we want to, I mean, I, I believe the applicant is willing to make some changes to, I, if the applicant is willing to make some changes, if I'm based on the feedback of the board, I'd rather have those changes before we send it to Gary. I don't want to send this to Gary, get an interpretation on it, and then it be changed. So I think we should, if, I think, seems like the applicant is still willing to work with us, and you want to...
What changed, what remains of this one?
Um, I think it was the addition of a, an additional exit or stairwell in the basement, and the bathroom's still concerning, but if, if the applicant wants to keep those, then we'll send it to Gary for interpretation with stall-like bathrooms.
I think that what, what you could do is indicate that when the applicant submits the revised plan, that Dennis will ask Gary to review it at that time, so we don't have to wait for anything until the time of your next meeting on this, then you'll have Gary's opinion hanging.
Okay. You get that, though, Dennis?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, Gary, for the venue. Fine. But you're going to wait till we get another plan?
Right.
The exterior stairwell?
Yes.
So that's great. The only other item up for bid would be the septic design. This is a forced main pump system, right? I mean, that's what this is, right? It's going uphill. And is there a reason? Because, I mean, there's already a design this way. I'm not changing that. I just, I just want to know why.
Where?
So there are better soils uphill. There's two hundred fifty gallon tank, a normal size, two hundred, twenty-five hundred gallon tank, normal size, four or five bedrooms. Or is it, I know there's some systems that you can pump it, but you add a dosing chamber or something ahead of time, and you're able to increase the field size in that just at the ten pound.
If you, if you.
There's no concern with the holidays and the number of bathrooms for the system?
Not how you'd like for better.
Not provocative.
Um, we, Rick, we wouldn't need another public hearing, right?
That's up, that's.
We can hear you.
That's really up to you. What it is, is that they already had a public hearing in their prior plan.
Right.
They've made changes. That's not unusual, you know, after you have, you're supposed to listen to the public and also consider changes that are otherwise made. If there's not a substantial revision to the plan, then normally you don't require another public hearing. If in fact, it was what you consider to be a substantial revision, that you believe that public input would better inform your decision, then you could have another public hearing. So it's up to the board as to whether or not they think it hasn't changed so much since the last public hearing, that it would, the board would benefit from public, public input for your informed decision.
The exterior hasn't.
The exterior hasn't changed from what I can, but I think the public hearing, the first public hearing, I don't think the basement was finished at all. I think it was completely vacant, right?
Yes.
Unfinished, I mean.
But it was.
And then.
What I'm trying to say is that the whole purpose of a public hearing is that the public may give you some input that you may not otherwise think of yourself. So there's a benefit to that, because you have a better informed decision. If there are some changes that are made, then you can determine just as well as anybody else, has any significance to that, then normally you don't need another public hearing.
And I think there's only one person that spoke at the.
Yeah, and we had a bunch.
One was who voiced the project, and the other person had some comments, but otherwise they.
And we had a couple of letters of support for the, the project as well. I, I think we're able to, as a board, to see the changes that were made. And I think we were an intelligent enough group to comment on those. I don't think we need to. Personally, I don't think we need to put the applicant through another public hearing. But if anybody wants to make a motion for it, it's you guys. Okay.
No public hearing.
Okay.
No additional public.
No additional public hearing.
So the question is, with this, I think two meetings, the next meeting will still be available on the, the next, the, the first meeting is September. And the, the first meeting is the build-up period, how good in the holidays. So I was, if there's any action, like, as since we're talking just a small change, that's adding a stair, I believe we can submit in four months. This must still be on the mic back at September for the next one. For the next meeting, who should take, right? It was wrapped in, in the summer.
How's everybody feel? It's a, it's a waiver from our traditional practice.
It has been the longest.
It has, I think, been the longest application in history. And there are no other issues as far as the resolution.
And actually, we, what we did now, we just clarified everything. Like, we haven't changed everything. Like we said, the resolution listed the whole site plan. Have you corrected that? Everything was basically the correct application to be a completed approval.
So I, but I think there's the, the revised plan, and also Gary's interpretation on the use. So that's, those two elements are at play. Right?
Yeah, I think that if, if in fact they submitted by tomorrow, that's the, that's the.
You can do it. It's only nine thirty.
Mountain Dew, buddy.
It's all okay.
The applicant is asking for that, so it doesn't get pushed over to everyone.
Right.
I'm, I'm, you know, the consultant side as well, can't deal with that. So the, so if they submit plans by tomorrow, and you want to have the, put them on the agenda for the following meeting, then we could ask Gary to have, maybe about the time.
Oh, by the time, he's not, Gary's not, gonna have Gary's.
Right.
But Gary's opinion, Friday before you meet, probable.
And it gives your office time to, I mean, that doesn't mean much for you to have to review, but, okay. Just want, don't want to put anybody else under the gun. Yes.
And the only other thing is that you would authorize that you have the resolution for that.
Um, now, I know the applicant agreed to put, put in a resolution that this wasn't going to be in the resolution as a shul and mikva. Is that a modification this board would like to make to the conditional approval?
I'm, I'm putting in here the applicant's reasons. I'm putting in an additional condition that it cannot be used as a shul or mikva or any use on a single family dwelling without application for modified use and review and approval by the planning board.
Okay. Do you need us to revote on the?
Just tell us that you want us to draft a resolution.
Draft a reso, is that okay with everybody? Draft a resolution approval? Yes? Okay. All right. So tomorrow, four, I think, four o'clock, the building department closes. So got a little work to do. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Starbucks may be open still in the commons. Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unless anybody really wants to use.
Yeah.
Just take two.